Good afternoon. Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk. Please call the roll and establish quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Schneer, Mayor Steinberg, and I expect Councilmember Warren momentarily, but Councilmember Carr will be absent.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. We have a pretty lengthy agenda here. Or let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry, always the way to begin the meeting. Councilmember Ashby, if you could please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I want to make a couple of announcements here. We're going to do this in terms of the order here. We're going to do the special presentation, two special presentations. And then when we get to the consent calendar, there are 19 people signed up for Item Three, which is the ordinance revisions relating to tobacco retailers. There are 19 people, as I said, signed up. And of course, you are all welcome to speak, but today is not the day that the council will actually be considering or deciding this item. An alternative proposal is going before the Law and Legislation Committee on March the 19th. On March the 19th. And then, depending upon what happens with that proposal, the main ordinance is then going to go before the City Council for a decision, probably the week after, still being discussed. And so tonight, you're welcome to this afternoon to testify, but there's no decision today. So among the 19 people, we have a lot of other items on the agenda, a lot of important items on the agenda. So I would just ask you to consider whether this afternoon is the afternoon you want to weigh in on this item. Councilman Schneer?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to that, that there is an alternative proposal. We'll be hearing that at the Law and Legislation Committee. I think that's where the discussion will happen. The council won't discuss this today.
We're not going to discuss this today.
It's only for review by people. So where the discussion will happen will be at Law and Ledge in a couple of weeks here.
And we will undoubtedly pass today's item, Item Three, to the full City Council. I don't think there's going to be a controversy over that. Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the city manager one point of clarification. It's not coming on the 26th, though, right?
It depends what happens at Law and Ledge. What the request is that Law and Ledge provide direction back to the city manager about whether to proceed as we're going with what's happening before us on PFP or to make changes based on the committee hearing.
Understood. I've asked to be present for that meeting. I'd like to be there, and I will not be there on the 26th. So that's my ask.
We'll note it, and we'll address all calendar issues later. Okay. So I just want to say that on that. And then, after the consent calendar, we are going to take up the city manager's report, which will be an opportunity for the city manager, the police chief, and our Office of Public Safety Director to all provide an update, an update on the events of a week ago Monday. So just for all who are watching and may want to come to City Hall, that is the order. Let's begin with the special presentations. We do have Councilmember Hanson with the recognition for the Persian community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know many of us celebrated New Year at the end of the last calendar year. The Lunar New Year just passed. And one of the things that's very significant in our community as well, and has been celebrated by the Persian community for over 3,000 years, is Nooruz. And today, we have Dr. Shakoo Miri to tell us a little bit about Nooruz, excuse me. And it's just something that's very special in the Persian tradition. And I'd love you to come up, Dr. This is your son Cyrus, right?
He is.
Yeah. Hi, Cyrus. And I see your brother Bay, your dad David, and your mom here, and the rest of the family as well.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Shakoo Miri. I'm honored to serve as the Chair of the National Iranian-American Council, which is the largest organization representing Americans of Iranian descent. We are 1 million strong. Before me, our chairman was Sacramento's own Ali Yusefi, which makes today's resolution and recognition especially meaningful for us. On behalf of our entire community, I want to thank the mayor and the City Council for today's resolution, and more importantly, for the love and the support and the warm welcome that you have and do give to our community. And a special thank you to Councilmember Steve Hanson and his staff, especially Samantha Minor, who understand the significance of Nooruz to our community in 2019. Nooruz is a time for our community to celebrate with family, with friends. It is about love, and it is about positivity. Your resolution, though, comes at a time when the president has canceled the traditional White House Nooruz and has instituted a Muslim ban. And so the support of our city, where we live and where we work, where our children learn and where they play, is especially meaningful to me. Together, every single person on this City Council represents to us the essence of American values: warmth and welcome for every American, and it makes us feel blessed and honored to be from Sacramento. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart for creating space to celebrate this holiday and for understanding how important it is to show the children in our community, my son among them, that they are valued members of our community regardless of their ethnic or religious background. So Cyrus is here with me today, and I want him to hear me as I say, "This is your Sacramento City Council and your mom, and we're saying that everyone belongs, and everyone is welcome, and everyone can celebrate Nooruz along with us." And that is the most American thing of all.
Thank you for celebrating Nooruz. Every kid is a member of the American family, whether they celebrate Nooruz, or Chinese New Year, or Passover, or Easter. I wish you all a Happy New Year.
Thank you so much for having us. And thank you for your resolution.
Wow.
I just wanted to say thank you for continuing to lead. We have so many people from different parts of the world who have come here as first-generation Americans or as refugees and have really made a tremendous difference in our community. I also think it's unique that celebrating the spring equinox, the vernal equinox, because most of those other celebrations recognize the darkest day of the year, which is the winter solstice. And I think it's really beautiful that we're celebrating renewal and our spring. So thank you. I'm going to come down and give this to you, and maybe we'll do a photo.
Thank you very, very much for... And thank you to Cyrus's mom, too, for reminding us why, despite our challenges, we're very proud to be part of an inclusive city that celebrates all of us. You're absolutely right. I just hope, Cyrus, your short speech, maybe it'll go viral back to Washington, D.C. Wouldn't that be great? Thank you very much, you guys. All right, let us move to Item Two on the special presentations, which is honoring Amber Delgado as the Community Development Department Employee of the Year. Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Ryan DeVores coming up. He's the head of our Development Division and Planning. And Amber, you guys, is the Community Development Department Employee of the Year. She has worked for the city of Sacramento either in code or in community development for 17 years. Obviously, she started when she was three, right? It's a big deal to be selected as Employee of the Year. First of all, it's a big department, so a lot of people. But she gets to go to the Golden One Center. She gets some rewards from the team. Probably, Ryan, you have to buy her lunch. If not before, you should have to now. I think that's a good thing. You may not recognize Amber because she is the person who's behind the scenes. She's the person who makes sure that our Community Development Department ticks. And when we talk about the most important employees, isn't that always the case? A person who's in the back making sure that every T is crossed and I is dotted is the most important person on our team. So Amber, congratulations to you. Ryan, excellent choice. Tell us more about Amber.
Very good. Just briefly about the program. The Community Development Department Employee Recognition Program acknowledges outstanding work by members of our team in the areas of customer service, support of our mission, vision, and values. Awards are presented monthly with one employee being selected as the Employee of the Year. A staff-led committee developed the program to include cash rewards from fundraising efforts, priority parking access, attendance at Golden One Center events, individualized certificates, and City Council recognition. The team actually asked for this, so that's why we're here today. Amber's a perfect example of an employee who exhibits our mission, vision, and values. She works tirelessly as the Community Development Department Personnel Contact, seamlessly handling all departmental human resource actions. Considering our recent growth in the number of retirements, she's been very busy lately. Amber is always courteous and professional with her coworkers, even when facing sensitive issues. Her reputation as a par contact extends beyond our department, where she's been called upon for assistance from employees within other departments. Her accuracy and attention to detail is top-notch. Let's give Amber a hand for her Employee of the Year.
Thank you, Amber.
Mayor, they'd like to take a picture with all of us if that's possible.
Public service, thank you for elevating the public service and on your recognition. Come on up here. Let's take a picture with all...
My colleague will join me and take a picture.
Yeah, to take a picture with all of us. Thank you, Ryan. And Amber, let's move to the consent calendar now.
We're going to do a city manager update, Mayor.
No, we're going to do, I'm going to do the consent calendar first.
Can we pull Item Number Six for a separate vote, which is the Yusefi?
Yeah, the Yusefi, the Ali Yusefi item, of course.
On the PFP, do you want to move that to the end of the meeting? Or do you just want to...
I think I would like to deal with the entire consent calendar. Let's just do that. Okay? Moved and seconded, but we're going to take Item Six as a separate vote. That is fine. Let's hear the public testimony on the consent calendar. Again, we're not discussing the tobacco issue here today. It's just a formality to pass for publication to the full council in several weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have 19 speakers on this item, but I'd like to remind the audience, this meeting is being video-streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips need to be turned in prior to the beginning of each item. Please fully complete the speaker slip with name and any phonetic clarification and preferred pronoun so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in chambers and can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct and have not immediately stopped. The presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. Please silence your cell phones or other communication devices and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. And accordless microphone, assisted listening device, and parking validations are available from the clerk at the front of the room. So our first speaker on Item Number Three is Rob Fong, then Sam Bayless, then Kavinder. Mr. Fong?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. So I heard you about the 19 things, and I get that. And so what I'd like to do before I get started, maybe help shortcut that?
Yes.
Is we've got a number of people here that we've been working with who are small business owners that would be greatly impacted by a flavor ban. And so if I could just have them stand up so you could recognize them...
Oh, that would be fabulous.
You know, I don't want to tell them not to speak, but at the same time...
They will have full opportunity to...
So I just want you to see, this is kind of the face of the small businesses here in Sacramento that would be affected by an all-out flavor ban. So anyway, so if you all, you know, this is going to be a long meeting, and if you don't feel the need to speak today, just know that you're being recognized, and there'll be ample opportunity...
Yes, there will.
...next week at the Law and Ledge hearing, right?
And at the full council hearing subsequently to that.
Right.
So at least two occasions. Thank you, Rob, first of all, thank you.
Yeah, just, I'm sensitive to schedule.
And thank you all for coming down. We see you. We see you. Thank you.
So at last October's Law and Ledge hearing, when the language was being passed forward that's on the agenda today, some of the committee members challenged the manufacturers and retailers to come up with an alternative to an all-out flavor ban, because at that time there was nothing else to consider. And so in that time, frankly, we've tried to get all the disparate characters together: shop owners, retailers, manufacturers, distributors, and folks in that space. And after, I think, a lot of good work, we came up with an alternative proposal. We actually shopped that around with a lot of the council members and got some good feedback. And what we have now turned in to your staff is an actual amendment to our amendment, which includes much stiffer penalties and fines. That was a lot of the feedback we got. So we think that we've come up with a really good practical solution. We absolutely agree with...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comments?
I'm going to let Rob, since he's speaking on behalf of, since he may be speaking on behalf of 18 other speakers, to continue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm almost halfway done.
Go ahead.
So anyway, we believe that we have come up with a good solution, frankly, for you all to consider. And at the forefront of that is how can we protect kids from these products, right? The vapor products, the e-cigarettes. But in a way that allows the businesses, the folks that are here, to stay in business in your city. So real quickly, some of the highlights. We've required that tobacco licensees all use age verification technology to verify people's actual ages with their IDs. We're saying that we want to ban all youth-oriented products. We don't want anything in this city that has anything to do with kids or marketing kids. Those would all be illegal. And then also, we're saying, let's think, we've absolutely increased the fines and penalties, which puts their licenses at risk for two and three strikes, or three and four strikes. We are very interested in getting the bad actors out of business as well. So the city allows the sale of other age-restricted products, like alcohol and cannabis. And we think that if you work with us by adopting these regulations, we would put the vaping industry at the forefront of age-restricted product sales, frankly, in the country. A ban would just drive all of the sales outside the city and onto the Internet, which is a way less age-restricted sort of venue for people to shop, and result in the closure of many, many small businesses in the city of Sacramento. Let's be clear, so the banning of all flavored vape products will actually cause dozens of small retailers in the city to close. There's really no such thing as a non-flavored vape, so a total ban would put them out of business. We're looking forward to having a real discussion about this at Law and Ledge next Tuesday, and would love the opportunity to work with your staff and yourselves to work out the details and this kind of new type of approach to it. So thank you for consideration. I know you guys have a lot on your plate, but this is an important issue, obviously, to a lot of the folks out here. So thank you.
Thank you, Rob, very much. Is there anybody among the 19 who signed up who are here in favor of the ordinance? Because I'd want to give them or a representative equal time. Anybody from the Cancer Association or Soul Collective? Is there anybody here? If not, okay. So then, we have 18 other speakers, including Mr. Bayless.
I'm just going to drop off my hat.
Okay. So let's go through and see which of the 18 here...
I think she just called my name, Kavinder Chakkar.
Okay, sir.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, City Councilpeople. One of the main points I just want to say, we just said the allegiance, and the line was that justice for all. I request, next week, when the Law and Ledge Committee meets, please give the small business people a chance to talk and give their opinion. We have got a lot of the very nice, I would say, proposal prepared that we have sent to the council, and I hope the council people will read them completely, not just glance at them, because it does save 45 business people from going out of business. There are 45 tobacco shops in the city of Sacramento that would go out of business if this were to pass. There are 243 convenience stores and gas stations that will lose 30 to 40 percent of their monthly sale, which would cause them to lay off employees. So basically, I would say, is work with us. Last time when we came here to City Council, Mr. Hanson had said, "Come back with a compromise." We've come back with a compromise, but we still need time for, just like today, we're not basically able to speak.
You are able to speak.
I appreciate, I'm talking about, you know, they're suggesting that this is not the time to speak to my members. So I would suggest if they want to come up and say a few things, but next week, when we have the Law and Ledge Committee, I would request that you give plenty more time for the business owners. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Amon Ray Dilber Chanel, then Isam Juwannat.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Amon Ray, representing 7-Eleven Franchise Owners Association. I'm also a franchisee. I stand here to talk to you about this ban. This ban will not only shift the product sales to another county or online shopping. The main concern we are about is small business. We are small business operating in the city. If this ban happens, we'll not be able to hire new employees. Our existing employees will lose jobs. The sale's going to shift. Totally banning will not allow me to be a small business anymore in this city. So there is alternate ways they have proposed. I'd like the city to consider those. I'll just add on to those. The technology part, he has talked about, we can put that into our stores. Where are we going to identify under age sales? Placement of the products in the store? We could always figure out a way to place those products so it's not attractive to the minors, excluding very attractive flavors like golden candies and stuff like that. Imposing penalties on licensees, training new licensees about restricted products, and also increasing the fine if there's any violation. So I'd like to request the city members to consider some of the proposal before me, and hopefully the members speaking behind me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today, and please come back next week.
Next speaker is Dilber, then Isam.
Respected Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Dilbir Chahal, a local tobacco store owner. I got opportunity a few times to come here and talk to a few council members, and I really, really thank you for that. I wouldn't take too long time. As Rob Fong mentioned, that proposal, we have prepared a proposal, a possible solution like we were asked last time to present it. Please, we're just here to request that, that please take into consideration, because that is very, very important for us and for my family, because full ban can throw us out of business, and that will kill our, you know, family life. So please consider that, and that's the only thing I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Isam Juwannat Nor.
It's me. I'm going to have to wait till the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nor Kachimi, and then Samarjit.
Honorable Mayor, respected council, good afternoon. I want to thank everybody for giving us an opportunity, even though it's two minutes, but it's very, very important for us to come forward and speak. You know, I want to keep it very short and simple. As Mr. Rob mentioned, you know, we have come up with an alternative proposal, and I really want the council to give a serious look at that. Like I said, everybody mentioned we're small business owners. The flavor ban will completely put us out of business. You know, I mean, we understand that teenage vaping is a problem, but shutting small businesses down like us is not going to be a solution. You know, there's other avenues where, you know, teenagers are already getting their products from, and this is going to make it only easier, you know? At least businesses like us, you know, we do age verification, we follow laws, and, you know, we're not the problem. I just want to emphasize on that. And like I said, you know, like, alternative proposal has been given to the council. I humbly, humbly request to each and every one of you to give it a serious consideration. And again, I want to thank every one of you for giving us an opportunity over here to speak. And thank you again, councilmembers and respected mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming this afternoon. Sir?
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Samarjit Mollie. I'm a local tobacco distributor in your area. We're actually a chain of multiple distribution centers who work together as a team. We, as a distributor, our businesses and livelihoods depend on meeting the need of our customers, the retailers. We have been actively involved, working on the proposal as a solution to the ordinance. We're not against the kids. We know they are our future, and we want to make sure that nothing that is in tobacco industry reaches in the kids' hands. Therefore, we will make sure we do not order and or supply any product that appeals to the kids, such as cartoon characters, candy flavors, or which Sacramento City thinks may influence kids. Instead of putting a whole flavor ban, that may result many of us out of business. We will also work on the packaging, marketing material by educating the manufacturers. At the end, I request you to make a wise decision to protect small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Sanu Tor, and then J.J. Wilkinson. Sanu?
If you could all line up, if your name is called, we'd appreciate it.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sanu Tor. I'm a small business owner, 7-Eleven franchisee in District Five. I don't want to talk a lot, but I just want to touch some points that, just like everybody has said, is make us part of the solution by, you know, being us, you know, on the board where we're helping each other to find the right solution rather than pushing us out of the business. That's not going to be the solution. You know, there'll be another way where kids will reach out to this product if that's our concern is. Being a father myself, I'm concerned about my kids' future, and I want to assure you that I'm in the support to do anything to protect the kids' future, but let's do it together as a team. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
J.J. Wilkinson, and then Sonhel Shadrue.
Thank you for hearing me. Excuse me. I wanted to come at you at a different point. I am an ex-smoker. I know tons of people that have been able to quit using vapor products. And if you guys do an all-out ban, it will force a lot of people to go back to smoking cigarettes. And I think that that's something that we should try to work on together. That is not something we want people to do. We all work daily to try to help people get off of cigarettes and to do something else that will help them better their lives. I see hundreds of people a day that vapor products have changed their lives. So I urge you not to pass this, to do some kind of change to it so that we can still help people while still protecting the children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Sohail Shadrue. I apologize.
He's going to pass to the next meeting.
Thank you. Sarabjit Shor.
Sarah.
And then Dakota Wenner.
Are you Dakota?
Sarabjit, right, you, sir. Good afternoon, committee members. I approach you today with great humility and hope that my words won't be taken in negative aspect. My name is Sarabjit. I'm a UC graduate. I'm from District Five, Schumer's district. My family owns about five businesses, and I just came here to say that this flavor ban will hurt a lot of businesses, as you guys know, as you guys see the room. I just want to say that the businesses that we have are legitimate. I bring legitimacy because that is precisely what the ban will take away. It seems that Sacramento has forgotten the history of the great United States. Have we not learned the history? That these type of bans do. Have we not learned the history that these type of bans do to increase the black markets? Today, the city wants to ban flavored tobacco and mental products to continue to protect the youth as addiction, youth from addiction. And as a member of the youth, I can tell you that, that the flavor and the tobacco products will not resolve this issue. Instead, it will take money out of the pockets of legitimate licensed business owners and give that income to illegal and non-taxable smugglers and drug pushers who will supply flavored tobacco. Because the ban will not stop the demand as long as the demand, the public wants it, they will find a way, either by hook or by crook. So I just want to be here and say that I beg you guys to not support this and that's it, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, sir, for coming today.
And next speaker is Dakota Wenner, then Tristan Hannah.
Good afternoon, esteemed council members, Mr. Mayor. My name is Dakota Wenner and I am here basically to put my voice for the, against the flavor ban. As a vapor, it has dramatically changed my life. I'm able to breathe better, sleep better at night. I'm even able to taste food better. All this is, is just propylene glycol and vegetable glycerin. It's the same stuff you find in your candy bars, stuff like that. Vaping has dramatically saved my life. I was smoking two packs a day. I don't smoke anymore. I hit my vape a few times a day and I'm relaxed, I'm calm. All it is, is the flavoring. There are people who can't eat certain foods because they're allergic to it. I, myself, am allergic to pineapple and if I vape a pineapple flavor, I enjoy it because I enjoy the flavor of pineapple, you know? It goes back to the marketing towards children because of the names, the flavors. Adults like flavors too, you know? Diabetics can't have certain stuff because of the sugars. This allows adult diabetics who can't have sweet stuff to be able to taste the things they like, you know? There was a study about the toxins and cancers from smoking cigarettes. You don't get that with this stuff. There are far less the amount of chemicals in vaping than there are in tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today, sir.
Next speaker is Tristan Hannah, then Lisa Randolph, then Brian Hecox.
Good afternoon, Tristan Hannah, mayor, city council members. I'm here speaking as a customer and a consumer. As a customer and consumer, I have been in plenty of tobacco and vaporizer stores from Texas, Nevada, and other places and over the few, the last few years, I have noticed a dramatic change in the labels they use and the flavor names that they use. Whenever I started smoking cigarettes, I was sixteen years old and I started smoking Marlboro Reds that I took from my mother. You know, teenagers will get their hands on products if they want the products. Now, over the last few years, I have noticed small business owners, you know, who do not want to sell these products to the youth. They have made great strides using different labels, product names that do not suggest the flavor, various things such as Michael. What's in Michael? You know, they're not out there trying to, to sell these things to kids to make them have these attractive names, these attractive flavors, and these attractive labels, you know? This is not the goal. The goal was cessation of smoking. The vaporizers and the things that I use every single day has stopped me from smoking. I stopped smoking at twenty years old, okay? Put down the Marlboro Red cigarettes and pick this up. This is a safer alternative that I have found and I do not want to see these small businesses or small business owners, you know, these people that have gone out, found something new, and tried to build something for themselves and for their consumers that they actually do care about. They do not want to sell these things to children. They only want to help people quit smoking and I think that is both admirable and a just cause. I thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Lisa Randolph, then Brian Hecox, and David Parker.
Good afternoon, council members, and thank you for, for hearing us. I know that you've already said that this is gonna go to another meeting. I just wanted to state a couple of quick points. First of all, I'm Lisa Randolph. I'm a member of the medical community. I am a mother of five, a former smoker, and current vapor. I have here testimonies, I've brought these to you guys before, I've sent them to your offices. These are tons and tons of responsible adults who have used vaping to quit smoking. I have here a stack of people who couldn't be here today because they're working, because they're doing, you know, whatever it is that they had to be doing and these are all their testimonials stating that if they did not have flavored vapor, they would go back to smoking and I can state for myself that I would do the same. I would just urge you to take a look at the proposal that's coming before you and to see that it really does address the biggest concern, which is the youth access. I feel that, that there, it's common sense. I feel that there's a lot more there, there's stronger penalties and it's a way that we can all kind of maybe compromise, find compromise and as you know, compromise isn't my way or the highway, it's finding somewhere in the middle where we can all live happily. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
That's the goal. Thank you.
Brian Hecox, then David Parker.
David said he's gonna pass.
David's gonna speak at the next meeting, so pass. Thank you.
Mayor and council, thank you for being here. Some of you guys are familiar with me by now and this is the largest quorum I've been privy to. I have a prepared statement that I'm going to set aside until next week.
You could, yeah, that's great.
My only thought on this agenda is relating to Councilwoman Ashby's comments about scheduling. Right now, members of the community that are gathered here, people both, on both sides, business owners and, and consumers, right now, we are all storming Normandy and trying to take Iwo Jima at the same time. We have a meeting for a statewide flavor ban on the twenty-seventh, two weeks from now. My, my only comment on the, on the situation of scheduling is to ask that you guys consider tabling this issue as well at the city level because it's a moot point if the state bans flavors and we would like the opportunity to focus on that fight before we come back and talk to you guys. That's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Parin Tajani, then Berman Obaldia.
Honorable Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I moved to the U.S. fifteen years ago. I'm originally a math teacher by profession. When I had to go into the tobacco business, I was so upset because I didn't want to sell the cancer sticks to the people. Nobody in my family smoked. The day we got electronic cigarettes into the market, that seemed like an opportunity for me to jump on and make people quit. I take making people quit cigarette as a challenge and the electronic cigarettes have been a very, very helpful weapon to me. I have made people over the age of eighty-five quit and I am confident I can make anybody quit. I spend thirty to forty minutes with a customer who wants to switch from electronic cigarettes, from cigarettes to electronics. I monitor them, I consult with them, and I have been so successful. Now, your concern is the teenagers, but it's our experience that if you try to snatch something from the teenagers or take something away, they're going to revolt even more. And they have an avenue, a very unorganized avenue where they can buy stuff for almost half the price. If I can get something for less than what the stores are selling, I tend to buy more as a consumer. Whenever there is a buy one, get one, I buy two things. Exactly that way the theory works. So this is going to open an avenue where they're going to start even vaping more in names of other people, using other credit cards. So I request you, whatever you want to do, please be very considerate. Please take your time and work on this seriously. We don't want this to become a negative approach. Thank you so much for hearing me and I have lots more to say, which I'll talk next time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming today and next week.
Thank you.
Berman Obaldia is on item three and then our final speaker on consent is Amy Williamson on item seventeen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll be very brief. My name is Berman Obaldia. I'm here representing APCA, the American Petroleum and Convenience Store Association, as well as being a resident of Sacramento, Steve Hanson's District Four. Back in October, APCA and its members, our, our convenience store members were on, on the menu in terms of this particular issue. Through our efforts and our collective will, we have put forth a proposal that allows us to be at the table discussing this viable, productive issue that helps our community. So we welcome the opportunity to discuss this in greater length next Tuesday before the Law and Legislative Committee and hopefully coming up with a, a solution to this particular situation. Thank you so much, sir.
Berman, thank you so much.
Amy Williamson on number seventeen.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Amy Williamson. I'm with United Way California Capital Region. Our CEO, Stephanie Bray, is here as well and we just wanted to convey our strong support for the Financial Empowerment Center item that's on the consent calendar.
Explain it real briefly, thirty seconds.
Yes, so for the last ten years or so, our organization has done quite a lot to build the financial counseling and coaching field here in the area and so we're happy to see the city joining in as a lead partner on that as well. Financial counselors and coaches, they help people both address financial crises and also work on financial goals for the future. So that helps children to do, to have a stronger foundation for doing well in school, succeeding in the future. So that makes it a good match for our Score One project at United Way. It makes it a great match for many of the related initiatives that the city and county have as well and also for many of the missions of our local nonprofits. So we look forward to seeing the center launched this year and grow in years to come.
This is part of equity and economic development.
Yes.
Big part of it. So thank you, United Way, and we're glad to be a partner with you on this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you. That is the consent calendar. It has been moved and seconded.
Mayor, if I could, just before we take the vote.
Yes.
In an abundance of caution, just to avoid any appearance of any conflict, I need to recuse myself on item nine since my husband works in the emergency room of Sutter Hospital, which we're voting on.
I understand. That's fine. And again, consent calendar absent item six, which Councilmember Hanson asked to take up separately. So, and we'll note, once the vote is taken, that Councilmember Ashby abstained on nine. So all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. With those notations, the consent calendar is passed. Let's move to item six. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very special item. I know to many of us, we've...
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming and we look forward to seeing you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you mind, we'll just wait a second while the chamber clears.
Let's wait, yeah, if we can wait just a second, please. Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item six is a very special item to many of us, including many of people at the Dais who had a personal relationship with Ali Yusefi, who died just a little over a year ago. Ali, I know most of you came to know, as he returned from college, many of us had known his father Cyrus because of the work around affordable housing that the family did and many of us came to know this impetuous and smart young man, Ali Yusefi, when he and Bear Miri showed up here at council in two thousand nine, asking to be chosen to develop the seven-hundred block of K. And I wasn't on the council then, but I was at the Downtown Partnership and because we're of a similar age, I looked to Ali and the other people working on projects like him and I saw this amazing spark. So many of our young people left Sacramento and didn't see this as a place to come back to, but he, Bay, so many others chose to make Sacramento better by coming back here because they loved it so much. There is no way I could capture Ali's legacy in the few moments that I have today. I believe some people will be speaking today, but he left not only a built legacy through historic preservation, the creation of affordable housing, but also through supporting small businesses of the seven-hundred block project, which is finally coming to fruition after significant delays. And mayor, you helped save that project during the demise of redevelopment so it could proceed. The Golden One Center and the Kings, Ali and his family jumped in as part of the local investors to help create that unique project and then stepped up again later and bid on the eight-hundred block project and ultimately won that process to buy and build new housing on the eight-hundred block of K. But most of us know him for things like the warehouse artist lofts, which is affordable housing for artists in our community modeled on a New York project that nobody had ever heard of, but after CADA tried several times to figure out how to save this historic warehouse and build new housing, out of the wreckage of three, I believe, other projects over the course of twenty years, Ali figured it out and left the city changed forever. Some of you may want a sandwich in the middle of the day or forgot to pick up something at the grocery store and you pop into Market 515, a beautiful building that was also saved and converted into a much-needed grocery store for the neighborhood. Seventeen Seventeen S is a workforce housing project that's mixed income that's, the city is committed to helping build with CADA on the S Street corridor on a site that's been vacant for an eon, literally had severe contamination. And it was the kind of project that Ali and his kind would tackle. They were not daunted. They did not choose the easy things. They, they always saw an opportunity in what was hard to leave us all better off. Engaged in the community through the Downtown Partnership, the Midtown Association, he was on the board of the Center for Contemporary Art and helped lead that organization through its merger with The Verge and became a champion for The Verge Center of the Arts as they were creating a new space for artists in Southside Park. And one of the things that I think many people who haven't had a chance to speak will say about Ali is his care for refugees and we talked about that a little bit earlier. He, in his free time, and I didn't know this because it appeared that Ali just had all this energy, but he helped with refugee resettlement here in Sacramento as people were displaced by war and violence and other things, helped people find a home here and I think the comments we heard earlier about the Persian New Year really captured the meaning of that kind of life. It's, it's really emotional still for many of us who knew him and for the family. They could not be here today because I think it's still very difficult, but they gave me a short statement to read. But Cyrus Fetna, Ozzy Ladi, his mom, dad, wife and sister, sent this statement. "We appreciate this gesture from the city council to commemorate Ali's impact to the city. As you all know, there are few people who loved Sacramento and contributed to its spark more than Ali did. It's an honor to have a common space named after him, to have his name on signs for people to see, to have his name spoken for years to come. This location in the center of the city seems perfectly appropriate across from the seven-hundred block, next to the Golden One Center, and we'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city for their support and kindness this last year. As his family, we know how exceptional he is and to have it reflected back to us with this gesture is truly something special." So... At, at the tender age of thirty-five, we lost him, but we all aspire to live up to the legacy, the challenge that he left us and hopefully inspire a new generation of people to know that opportunity in Sacramento is boundless. We just need the hard work, open heart and open mind to tackle it and this space will be very special. The family worked with us to choose the name Ali Yusefi Square in the idea of a public square, which is a place for people to meet of different opinions, share, dialogue, build community. And this site has a legacy as well. It used to be the site of a historic church, one of our first Catholic churches here, St. Rose of Lima, which has been the name it's born for a long time and we will have a plaque on site to recognize that particular history as well, but Ali's legacy will live on in all of us and hopefully through this space. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this. I believe there are some speakers. And I really just appreciate the kind of community that we have here, which is a loving, open, hard-working community.
Very well said, Councilmember Hanson. Thank you very, very much. You know, Councilmember Harris is up and we'll hear from the public and... Go ahead. Jeff?
You know, I'd just like to say, having known Ali, that he always, always had the best interest of Sacramento at heart and I will be honored to walk through Ali Yusefi Square every day. He was a wonderful human being and we all miss him terribly.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, mayor. It's still super hard to talk about Ali because, you know, when you, when I won my seat on this council, I was the youngest council member. I'm not anymore, but I was when I won and I met, Ali was the first developer that I met. And I met, Ali was the first developer that I met to work with because I represented downtown. And he came out to meet me in Natomas to talk about his K Street proposal. And I remember thinking, wow, Sacramento has these young developers. And he was so smart and ambitious, and I thought, I'm going to get to work with this guy for a really long time. And when I ran for mayor, Ali was one of the people I thought about, like, this will be so fun to work with him on this city and kind of be the next generation that looks at these blocks and these neighborhoods and figures out what to do with them next. And when he passed away, it just felt like a partner that would be working with me for a long time was gone. And my three favorite memories of Ali are this. One, the day that he and Bay got the keys to K Street. They were hilarious. They literally said they were going to have a sleepover in those buildings. They called Michelle Killie, my chief of staff, and I over to meet them, and we did. And we walked through every inch of K Street, every building, every corner. They were so excited to find, like, literally anything in any portion of that building. They were giddy like 10-year-old boys. Second favorite memory, Ali and a couple of his buddies went to a Kings game, which he did all the time, but they went to, like, Oakland or something, and they were the only ones wearing Kings gear. I don't even think it was a Kings game. I think it was a playoff game, right? And the Kings weren't even playing. And Chris Granger, the president, spots them and tweets out, whoever these hardcore fans are, you can have my seats for a game. Well, he didn't need Chris's seats. He was an owner of the team. But he was crazy enough to go sit in Oakland dressed all in Kings gear and cheer for his team that wasn't even playing. And my third favorite memory of him is really at the essence of who he is. When he took me to see the wall, which is the Warehouse Artist Lofts, something that Ali would do that I don't think anyone else would do. And by the way, I went there this week with my son and walked back through the same halls, and I have not been back without Ali because it's too hard. He framed out things on the building. So if there was, like, a wall where somebody who had worked on that wall had written a measurement many, many years ago, he saved that piece and didn't allow it to be painted over and put plexiglass on it to honor the workers who originally worked on the building. It's so Ali. It's so Ali to take a building and reach back as far as he can and honor every hand that touched every corner of building our city. And I am proud to have known him and proud, proud, proud to call him my friend. And Steve, I think he'd be so thrilled to have that square across the street from K Street named after him. And I, too, will walk through it and sit down and think about our friend.
I think he'd be mad at us for being so loving to him in public.
Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues for the, putting this together and also to, again, you know, thank the legacy of Ali because of his commitment to, you know, the work of refugees. And, you know, St. Rose of Lima, the church, the first Catholic church before there was a diocese here, was also a place of welcoming and, which is much of our history in Sacramento. And I think his history and his legacy of committing himself not only just to the development and the improvement of our city, but to the heart of it, which is our people. And I think that is a big legacy he's going to leave behind. Very fitting that the location will be also the location of a central welcoming point since the inception of our city. And with that, I just want to thank my colleagues and the family and lend my support to this motion.
Thank you, Eric. Let's hear from the members of the public here. We will take a vote.
Thank you. I have five speakers, Bay Miri, Wendy Saunders, then Valerie Mamon.
Bay, take your time.
Thank you, Mayor, council, staff and public. I want to especially thank Councilmember Steve Hanson. His thoughtfulness in leading the effort to formally change the name of Lima Park to Ali Yusefi Square is so appropriate, inspiring and appreciated. I find it difficult to think of the possibility of establishing any stronger of a legacy in a lifetime than what Ali established by the time he was only 35. Ali contributed to the Sacramento community in ways that can never be replicated. The magnitude of his community involvement, in addition to his focus on transcendent developments, is incomprehensible. The significant time and love that he still gave to friends and family beyond those focuses was one of his most impressive traits. And even more impressive was witnessing just how much those around him enjoyed and respected him. With this decision, the council inspires our community in many of the ways Ali does. Ali would want us to use this square to create community, to curate a steady series of special events, to promote the arts and our vibrant Sacramento culture. Endless love and thoughts to Ali's amazing father, Cyrus, and the entire beautiful Yusefi family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bay.
Wendy Saunders, then Valerie Mamon.
And Wendy.
Steinberg, Vice Mayor Hanson and council members, thank you for the honor of speaking today. Vice Mayor Hanson mentioned that, you know, we were working with Ali on 1770 S Street. In fact, CADA secured the property, and we had had such a wonderful experience on the wall that we could think of no better partner to engage in that project with us. And now that we continue to push that rock uphill, I mean, we meet, you know, with Cyrus and Ozzy about every other week, and every, every week it's, you know, what would Ozzy, what would Ali have done? And, you know, Ozzy will pour through his notes in his computer because he really had this incredible vision and this commitment to perfection and inspiration that's, that's really, it's, it's one of a kind. I can think of no more appropriate recognition of our friend and the city's big advocate than naming Rose of Lima Parker after him. We at CADA became close to Ali through our collaboration at the Warehouse Artist Lofts. And that project really celebrates all the things that I think of when I think about Ali Yusefi as the developer. His commitment to art, painting, sculpture, dance, music, and the artists who are driven by their creativity. Housing for all, high-quality housing in desirable locations that's affordable to the broad spectrum of our populace. And placemaking, creation of spaces where people can want to gather, they want to see friends, share a meal or an activity, places that promote people's health and their happiness. And like Wall, The Hardin accomplishes all of those things. Art, like the mural at Solomon's Deli. Housing for all, or as Ali would have put it, a cool place that my friends can afford to live in. And now that you've added Ali Yusefi Square, it's a placemaking opportunity as well, a place that people will gather, friends will meet, where they'll share activities, health and happiness. Knowing firsthand about Ali's attention to detail and care for perfection, it's now uncomparable on you, the city and your partners as stewards of Ali Yusefi Square, and I'm glad Bay brought it up, too. It needs to be programmed, it needs to be kept beautiful, it needs to be kept in honorable and fitting memory of Ali.
Thank you, Wendy.
Our next speaker is Valerie Mamon, Liv Mo and Jean Ford.
Valerie.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm honored here today to represent the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, to share our support for renaming St. Rose of Lima in honor of our friend and board member, Ali Yusefi. As a member of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, Ali challenged us to think bigger and to do more. He was a driving force that created some of the most important projects in our city, from being a part of the local ownership group that stepped in to save the Kings and build a world-class downtown arena, to building high-quality affordable housing. He had a talent for making old things new while honoring the rich history that makes our city amazing. Ali, led by example, and created some of the most important projects in our city, and his impact will forever echo the revitalization. His passion for serving others and improving the quality of life in downtown Sacramento is something we should all strive for. It's comforting to us and many to know that this square is located across from Ali's visionary project at 700 K Street, The Hardin. His legacy will live on with each conversation, idea and dream sparked in the square. Thank you for your support. Every day is our chance to be like Ali and make the city a little better.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Liv Mo, and then Jean Ford is the final speaker on this item.
Hi, Liv.
Hey. So, thank you to Daryl, to the mayor and to council for having me. I prepared comments, and then they kind of went out of my head as I sat here listening to everybody give tributes to Ali just now. And thinking over some of the things I've heard in my experience working with Ali, I feel like Ali, the best way I could describe Ali and something I've said a lot since he passed, is that Ali was somebody who got it. And in my experience and the work that I've done regionally, I haven't always found people who could be such willing collaborators and so smart and so dynamic. And I think that his love for Sacramento was reflected in the ways that he went out really internationally and saw interesting things that he could come and experiment with here and make successful. He was a collaborator and a friend, and I really relied on him very heavily up until not long before he passed away. Sorry, this affected me more than I thought it would.
It's okay.
So I just want to thank all of you for this. I think it's going to be amazing to have a place that we can honor him and remember him. And I think it's really terrific that there's going to be this lasting legacy for somebody who made such a tremendous impact on this place in such a short amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Liv.
The final speaker on this item is Jean Ford.
Mr. Mayor and the members of the city council, my name is Jean Ford. I speak here as a Catholic, and I really want to honor Ali, Mr. Yusefi, but I just want to make sure that your plaque is aware of what you're doing, that this is not just a church. It was the first Catholic church in Sacramento Valley. And it was also the place for the first school. Two classrooms were built behind this church. This is the beginning of civilization in this valley. And it deserves a plaque that does not just pave over because someone was able to redevelop. It is the seabed of our history. At a time when Sacramento was filled with gold miners, drunks, stinky men, and this was the first place of civilization. 1851 to 1887, it was the only Catholic church. And when the Sisters of Mercy came in 1854, they took care of the sick during the floods and the fires. And the city, Peter Burnett gave this land to the city, and he gave the land that is now the state capital because it was the high ground to take care of the sick. So please, make your plaque worthy, same way that you said he put...
Thank you, sir.
He put plastic to show who built the building. Thank you.
Thank you. There will be a plaque that signifies St. Rose of Lima Park, and I appreciate your testimony.
It is the first school.
You remind us of all of our history. Thank you. Last word, and we're going to vote here, from the mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Hanson for bringing this forward and fighting to make this happen, and all the council members for your eloquence. I would just say that for decades and decades into the future, people will come downtown and many will ask, who was Ali Yusefi? And the answer, as the story will be told, is he was a man of, young man of great vision, a young man who engaged in his community, a young man with a big brain and an even bigger heart. And he won't be forgotten. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. That passes eight to nothing. Thank you all very much. Very good. Thank you. And please give our best to the, to the family, okay? And Cyrus, you going to run for office sometime? Yes. I hope so. Okay.
I don't know.
There you go. Okay. Thank you all. All right. As I announced at the very beginning of the meeting, we are now going to take an item under the title of the City Manager's Report. And this is going to be a report back from the chief and his team and Francine Turner, our Office of Public Safety Agency office here. I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Chan for some opening comments.
Right, Mayor and council. Mayor and council, you'd asked at last week's council meeting for us to come back as soon as possible with a status update on the events surrounding the protest from last Monday. And so while we're not complete, we haven't completed the review of all the data from that event, I thought it was important for the chief to come forward and provide an update with what we do know. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Hahn and Deputy Chief Paletta to make the presentation on the update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. As the city manager said, I'm Police Chief Daniel Hahn. At last week's council meeting, I promised to come before you within a couple of weeks regarding the details related to the protests that occurred last Monday night on March 4th. Before I turn this report over to Deputy Chief, who was in charge of the response last week, I would like to cover a few things. There have been some questions about the fact that I, the police chief, spoke of or didn't speak of at last week's council meeting, which was the day after the protest in question. I've always committed to providing facts when I speak and when our department provides information. Publicly speculating or assuming things does not help us take an honest look at what happened and how we can get better as a department and a community. Due to the nature of last week's protest, the length of time of the protest, the geographic area it covered, and the number of personnel involved, just to name a few, I did not want to speak to what happened until I had all the facts confirmed. I've never promised that issues or mistakes would not arise under my leadership. I never promised that our department of over a thousand members would not make mistakes or have areas of improvement that could be made. I've actually said the opposite. I've said that we need to be a learning organization that always seeks to improve our service to our community and employees. What I did promise is that we would deal in facts and release facts, because only when we know the facts can we make real change that leads to real progress in our city that values everyone. In this instance, everyone's First Amendment rights and the safety of our community, both at the same time. I also want to add some additional perspective. The line-level personnel in our department, the officers, dispatchers and others, who work the front lines and work the phones and the radios during critical times, have dealt with regular protests and demonstrations, oftentimes on a daily basis, for about a year now. And that is in addition to the regular protests that we've always seen due to this being the capital of California. There is no doubt that last week's protests ended differently than most previous protests in our city. It's not my intention to arrest members of the media or pastors, nor do we ever want to be at a point of arresting anyone during a protest or demonstration, much less the number of arrests that occurred last week. On the day I was sworn in as my hometown's police chief, I stated that I'm not interested in leading the best police department in the nation. I'm only interested in being the best police department for the city of Sacramento. This is what I believe we must always focus on. Not only do we absolutely need to operate within the law, but we also must be the police department that is best for our city. Oftentimes, this is a higher standard, and we do not shy away from this higher standard. Legally, we, as a police department, are given discretion within the law. In hindsight, we can use that discretion to do things differently that we believe would bring different results in the future when the circumstances are similar to the protests that happened last week. You will hear about these changes in the following demonstration from the deputy chief. As anyone in our city knows, there have been countless protests and demonstrations over the last year. These protests are born out of a significant amount of frustration, anger and questions, and they center around very emotional issues that are oftentimes contentious in our city. and they center around very emotional issues that are oftentimes contentious in our city. The protests and demonstrations have challenged our city and our police department. And for the vast majority of these protests over the past year, and the one on Monday, the line-level staff, those officers and dispatchers and others, have performed admirably in a professional manner. The facts bear this out. Over the last year, including last Monday, there have not been any fatal injuries, near fatal injuries, mass property damage such as burning buildings and cars, or mass looting, all of which we have seen in other cities around our country. I believe the facts also bear out that this, at least in part, is due to the professionalism of the line-level officers on the front lines and the community leaders that have assisted in showing what we are made of in Sacramento. I make this point to say, the concerns this council has and the changes this council wants to see, the concerns and changes our community has, the concerns and changes that I have, and the concerns and changes that our department has, those are on me, me and the leadership team of the Sacramento Police Department, not the line-level staff on the front lines of the protests and the demonstrations that have performed in a professional manner last week and over the last year. They have followed directions in a professional manner. The concerns over the fact that people were arrested, along with other concerns, are born out of the direction our frontline personnel were given, not with the personnel implementing that direction on the frontline. With that said, I will now turn this presentation over to Deputy Chief Paletta to go over the details of the event and the direction we will be going in the future. Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Deputy Chief Dave Paletta oversees operations division for Sacramento Police Department. Today, I'm going to provide you facts as we know them today, but understand, there's a lot of information out there. For example, we still have approximately 1,600 hours of body cam video that we need to get through. So, as a brief overview, in this presentation, I'll discuss the background information and how we learned about the protest, the specific route it took as it traversed around residential streets and main thoroughfares, the initial police response to the march, incidents and crimes that occurred while the group marched through the streets, and lastly, the events that led up to the arrests later in the evening. Just some background, around 10:00 that morning, we had designated officers for protests that potentially could pop up in the city, and we had briefed that group in a large number on our incident action plan. As part of an incident action plan, we designate supervisors to make decisions on the fly based on what they're seeing real time in the field. Everybody in that incident action plan had a job and a duty and carried it out to the best of their ability that day. The command post for that day was established in our real-time crime center, and we're operating, at that time, we were operating under unified command, which simply means we had called in other agencies to assist us if needed. In the unified command, we had the Sheriff's Department, we had representatives from the Highway Patrol, we had the Fire Department, we had a member from CalOES, and our own from the city's Director of Emergency Management. Outside agencies and law enforcement capacity were brought in to support us. If we had talked early on during the planning phases that if we had protests, the police department would be primarily responsible for any enforcement action. With that, on that day, the police department learned about the event around noon time on March 1st, or, excuse me, March 4th. It was discovered on a social media post and specifically referred to as a call to action with the intersection of Folsom Boulevard and 50th given. The times indicated were 6:30 in the evening till 10:00 at night. There was no other specific information at that time. On that same day, we had units assigned to the city at the Golden One Center as there was a Kings basketball game. This was significant to us as a police department because two days prior, the district attorney had released her decision on the Stephon Clark investigation, and we know in the past the arena was subject to protest. This was the specific flyer that we were tracking at noon that day. We have seen others of it, like in the past, with the generic information, and from our experience, we learned that as the day went on, the information would become more specific.
Thank you.
At the command post, we were trying to determine in what in that area the protest group were going to focus their attention on, as it's not commonplace for protests to occur on Folsom Boulevard. So, with that initial information as a precaution, we sent some officers over to the Trader Joe's to make them aware of the information and the time span in which we were operating under. Later that afternoon, we located an additional related social media post, and it's noted on the slide, which added some context as to potentially why that area was selected. Learning this new information, we began identifying specific staff to ensure the safety of the march participants, but also the residents living in that neighborhood. On a later media post, we now know that Trader Joe's was specifically identified as the place to gather. Around 5:15 that evening, we started designated units to go to that area to start monitoring for activity should the protesters arrive early. We had something in place to facilitate their movement. The map that's on the right of the screen depicts the overall route that the protest group took, and I'll break that down in the next couple of slides. This is the technical definition of penal code 407, which is an unlawful assembly. On top, there's two different elements that can be, they don't have to be together, but I'll read the first one, whenever two or more persons assemble together to do an unlawful act, and then the other one's self-explanatory. Under penal code, the next penal code 409, that's the enforcement aspect of 407, this makes it a misdemeanor crime for failing to disperse and remain present in an area once an unlawful assembly is declared, only after dispersal warnings have been given. The only persons exempt in this section are public officers and people assisting them with the dispersal. Dispersal orders. So, after an assembly is declared unlawful, it's our policy and practice to give numerous clear orders to disperse. The verbiage we currently use follows the guidelines set by the Peace Officer Standards and Trading, as well as case law. The admonishment given, and I'm going to list a couple of things here, must be clear that the crowd is expected to immediately leave. Has to include a warning that force may be used. Must be audible to the entire crowd. Our practice is that we give the admonishment multiple times. After the order is given, there has to be time allowed for the dispersal, and lastly, there must be paths for people to leave. There were no exemptions for the media in these circumstances. However, in penal code 409.5, personnel from the media is allowed to remain at events such as floods, storms, and other natural disasters. That said, it's been our experience when dealing with protest events that our media outlets separate themselves from others participating in the protests. It's never been our practice to arrest members of the media in these circumstances. Next three slides, I'm going to go over a timeline, and then there'll be some follow-up slides that'll talk about some additional information of events that happened during the march. Around 6:20, we began noticing people gathering at the Trader Joe's parking lot. About 6:42, the members took to the street. Consistent with other protests, consistent with other protests, we dedicated members of our bike and motor team to facilitate safe travels. Minutes after the protesters took the street, they blocked Folsom and 50th. About the same time, SacFire medic unit was responding eastbound, code three, with their lights and siren, from their station on H Street to an accident. The response was delayed based on the fact that marchers refused to yield. The protest group eventually allowed, the protest group eventually allowed the emergency vehicle to go by. From there, the march went westbound on Folsom Boulevard to 47th Street. They made a left westbound turn onto M Street while making brief stops at 47th and 46th Streets. At 46th Streets, the marchers made a right or northbound turn onto 46th Street where they continued to J Street and took over that intersection. Based on the fact that the marchers had completely stopped this heavily traveled roadway, and there was concern for vehicle and protester safety, our field lieutenant assigned to the protest made the decision to give dispersal orders in an effort to clear the street. Two PAA announcements were given, and the marchers continued westbound on J Street. It should be noted that any time PA orders were given during this protest, it was met with crowds yelling, whistles blowing, and the use of amplified sound device to make it difficult to hear our announcements. Continuing. At J Street and 45th, the marchers again stopped in the intersection. Field lieutenant again directed an additional dispersal order to be given. One PAA announcement was made, the group complied, turning left southbound onto 45th Street where they continued to Folsom Boulevard. They made a right westbound turn onto that street, Folsom Boulevard. They continued to 43rd where they again stopped at the intersection, 43rd and Folsom. The lieutenant again directed admonishments to be given. It was read via the PAA system in a total of seven times over an eight-minute period. The protesters complied, made a right turn northbound onto 43rd, and continued their On this slide, I have a note at 7:36 that vandalism was reported. In a future slide, I'm going to touch on that a little bit more. This is just for purposes of time. From 43rd Street, the marchers went back onto J Street, making a left westbound turn onto that street. They continued on J Street to 40th Street. At J Street and 40th, the group stopped at the intersection directly in front of Mercy Hospital. Our concern at that point was the group was now blocking J Street, not only blocking J Street, but was now preventing the J Street access into the hospital, as well as the hospital's vehicle access point into one of their emergency points. As a precaution, the hospital placed themselves in a lockdown status. Again, additional admonishments were given four times over a three-minute period. At this time, the decision was made to pull additional police units from the Golden One Center as this event now had grown to about over 150 people. After approximately 20 minutes, the protest group marched left southbound onto 40th, briefly stopping, blocking the intersection at M, as the group continued towards Folsom. A motor officer on the radio saw what he described as an open flame being carried by the protest group who was leading the group. I'll show you from a helicopter's perspective here in a minute what that looked like. This next slide is a shot captured from our helicopter. The view is from the intersection of 40th and J when the protest group stopped in front of Mercy Hospital. At the bottom of the photo is Mercy. There's a little envelope there that illustrates where the building is. The red circle, the red circle depicts the distance from the officers noted on the left of the photo. Those are bike officers, the protest group, which are circled in the center. I'm going to continue with my timeline, and I'm going to back up and talk about some of the events that we learned about throughout the protest. Marchers turned left eastbound onto Folsom Boulevard and stopped at 50th Street near where they began the march. It was our belief at that time that the group would self-disperse after a short period of time, as this has been the practice we have seen almost over the past year. This was not the case, and the crowd continued to remain in the roadway, completely blocking Folsom Boulevard. Based on the activity we had seen along the protest route at this point, we had officers pull on, put on their protective gear over their normal uniform. Due to the, due to the noise that we faced on the other admonishments along the route, the decision was made to bring in what's known as a long-range acoustical device. It's basically an advanced PAA system. Unfortunately, we had one on site, but it wasn't working, so we requested one from an allied agency. Once this equipment arrived, we made 15 additional orders to leave the area through our admonishments over a 30-minute period of time. Many of the group complied and left the area. However, a significant amount remained. At that point, the field lieutenant assembled some arrest teams and gave the direction to identify the main instigators in the group and try to make arrests. They were successful and made six arrests at that time. At this point, we were requesting additional staffing to get in place to conduct a mass arrest, but we were only going to do that once we were in a safe position and without rushing. Based on the criminal activity we had seen along the protest route up to this point, CHP and our Sheriff's Department were called in to give us a hand. So, I'm going to go back a little bit. And so, this map depicts different incidences that occurred along the route. Been asked many times what made this protest different than others we have managed throughout the past year. In the past year, we've monitored or staffed over 200 events, and this one certainly had a different outcome, but as I talk about some of these incidents, I think you'll at least understand some of the why. Several incidents occurred during this march. More specifically, early on in the march, one of the bike officers noticed several parked cars on 45th Street that had been keyed and scratched. Initially, as he was driving by, he had saw the damage and thought potentially it was old, and then as he looked at additional cars as he traveled that roadway, he realized that they all had the same type of scratch marks in the same area of the car. There were also two confrontations. The first involved an individual who confronted protesters as they were passing his residence. Several of the protester groups, several from the protest group stopped, marching, and got into a verbal confrontation with the individual. This went on for several minutes, and the individual resident retreated back into his house. There was another and separate confrontation in the street near Mercy Hospital. This involved a male subject wearing a Make America Great Again hat accompanied by a female. Several in the protest group focused on his hat and began to encircle him. One member of the protest group pulled the hat from his head. The subject attempted to walk away with his companion, but was closely followed by members of the protest group. In total, we found that eight cars had been damaged as a result of the protest. Four additional vehicles were identified as being damaged. However, at this time, we haven't received the report from the owners. Last, I mentioned officer seeing a subject carrying a burning object while they were on 40th Street. The officer saw the individual waving the flame over parked cars. Officers were immediately concerned that the individual was trying to set cars on fire. Throughout this whole event, and for the incidences that we were aware of, we tried to put officers in a position to identify the suspects and make arrests so the protest could continue without further incident or damage. Just two simple pictures of what we were made aware of, the keying on the car on the left, and then later, we had reports that cars were dented and/or tail lenses were broken out. Next, I'm going to show you a short video clip from our helicopter's view. This shows the protest group on 40th Street. This shows the protest group on Fortieth Street. At some point here, as I start the video, the red circle will highlight the subject carrying the lit object, which was possibly a flare or something similar.
In the middle of the road, me?
Man, that was my blood. That was that slippery.
air unit, and the air unit confirms what he sees. Unfortunately, we were able to never get close enough to identify the person doing it, but you can see very disturbing information, and this is what we're working with as we're making decisions on what to do and handle this protest. This is an overhead view of Fifty-first Ave, about 2, Fifty-first and Folsom, about two minutes after the last LRAD announcement was given, the dispersal order. At the bottom of the photo, it's marked with 5090, is where the police scrimmage line remained. Mid-block on Fifty-first, basically the center of the photo, is where the protest group was. This shows the distance between the officers and the protest group. Nine fifty-three hours, as the group continued on their own, southbound on Fifty-first Street, once again, there was no officers immediately following, and they were still staged at Folsom Boulevard. That being said, we had an overwhelming concern that we were unable to make arrests on those previous incidences that I discussed, and our fear was that similar crimes were now going to occur in another neighborhood. Our goal remained to provide public safety and to the affected area. The individuals on this slide remained in a group and traveled to the center of the roadway. Our field lieutenant was actively working in trying to coordinate the response of other units from CHP and the Sheriff's Department. Unfortunately, it wasn't until the group got to the Highway 50 bypass that they were Moving forward, this was a significant event for the Police Department, as I cannot recall a recent time when we have arrested this many people, including media and clergy members relating to a protest. As such, we're reviewing all aspects of this event, and as I started with, there's still a lot of information out there that we need to go through. This incident's also under review by the Office of Public Safety Accountability. After the event, we received several complaints through our Internal Affairs Office. In addition, several complaints were mentioned last week during City Council. We have been proactively reaching out to each of these individuals to get their statements and doing preliminary investigations on their allegations of what occurred. Specific to the media, now prior to deploying officers in protest-related events, during our briefing, we discussed dealing with media and our expectations. We also note that relative, related laws in our operational outline. In the future, our Public Information Officer will host meetings with the media to discuss expectations and related laws that cover them at active scenes, with the goal of allowing them to cover these types of events. We have implemented a community liaison program where members of our outreach team work in partnership with community leaders and clergy who are associated with the protest group. Community leader will be in direct communication with PD during these events, so help us self, this will help self-manage and give us additional avenues to discuss our courses of action during the protest. We successfully utilized this twice last week during a couple of protests. We're also looking at the dispersal order. Heard several comments about the language that is used, and once again, it's followed based on, or it's based on case law and what post standards. However, that said, there's a mention of the use of lethal force in there. We're also going to look at giving clear direction on where and how to disperse and notifying the group that basically an arrest or imminent. We're also making available later today on our transparency website, that the entire helicopter video you saw, just a snippet of, as well as this PowerPoint presentation. Lastly, we have a crowd control manual and other related policies that are being reviewed and updated as needed. As I started with, each protest is unique to itself. Our hope is that we look at these areas, we potentially have different outcomes, and that concludes this presentation. So the chief and I will be at the staff table, should you have any follow-up questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we take questions from the City Council, I'm going to ask Francine Turnhour, our Office of Public Safety Accountability Director, whose charge, and just a little history here, I think is important for the public to know, whose charge is to provide oversight for both the police and fire departments. Prior to my becoming mayor, the OPSA office was functionally located under the city manager. And in collaboration with the city management and with the Police Department, a decision was made, we made a decision early in my tenure to actually shift the OPSA office to the mayor and the city council. So there is that separation, if you will, between the OPSA office and the city management and the police chief. And we all agree that that is appropriate. And so now you're going to hear our OPSA director's evaluation, if you will, and recommendations regarding last Monday night's incident, and then we'll have a conversation if the chief or Assistant Chief Paletta want to respond to Ms. Turnhour's presentation or some of her findings. That's of course, that's of course appropriate as well. Francine?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council members. On March 5th, Mayor and Council tasked the Office of Public Safety Accountability with answering seven specific questions regarding the Sacramento Police Department's response to a peaceful protest on March 4th in East Sacramento, where 84 members of our public were arrested. In reviewing the policing of this demonstration, I identified several areas that can benefit from further research and consideration by the Police Department, which would be consistent with the philosophy of achieving quality through continual improvement. Those main areas include communication, police response, and relationship building. My presentation will outline these questions that were asked, the answers that were received specifically from the Police Department, and OPSA's recommendations where appropriate. So the first question, and I've kind of condensed some of these, because I know there are several separate ones, was what precipitated the order to disperse? According to the Police Department, parameters were given to the platoon leaders. SPD would allow for peaceful protests, dispersal orders would be given if the protesters stopped in major intersections. In addition, parameters to not allow criminal behavior, which would include violence or destruction of property. Per SPD protesting, the protesters of the group stopped at several intersections. PD reported several cars had been vandalized, as well as two confrontations with non-protestors. How was the order to disperse communicated? Orders were given via patrol vehicle speakers, as well as the long-range acoustical device. What were the circumstances of the arrests? All of the arrests were made for unlawful assembly. Were people arrested who still wanted to leave or were not permitted to leave because of the perimeter on the bridge? The answer to that is yes. Once SPD issued the final broadcast of unlawful assembly, which was at Folsom Boulevard and Fifty-first, all community members who did not disperse in a direction other than the bridge where the arrest team was located were arrested. Number four, what is the distinction between press and the public during protests? Per SPD, there was distinction between media and protesters when it was obvious. Currently, there is no system for credentialed media to be separated from the protesters. Who was in command of all the agencies working together? SPD had a deputy chief and a captain as the operational commanders. They also had liaisons from the outside agencies at the command center. In the field, the primary commander was a lieutenant. Why were people told to go in one direction down Fifty-first Street to disperse, and then blocked and arrested when they followed orders to move in that direction? Per SPD, the crowd was told to disperse from the area of Fifty-first and Folsom. Some people were allowed to leave behind the skirmish line, which would have been to the west. The decision to make arrests had been made prior to the group walking southbound on Fifty-first, therefore, their direction of travel would have been irrelevant. What is the process in place to revoke or dismiss citations, specifically to the journalists that were processed? The district attorney's office can dismiss citations in this case. So moving on to the office's recommendations, I would like to mention that obviously, everything that I looked at was in hindsight of the incident. I do want to give appreciation to the community members that I have spoken to. I know it was very hard for a lot of them to relive the situation and talk about it, so I want to publicly give that appreciation. The Police Department was in cooperation, but there still is, as the deputy chief mentioned, a lot of information that the office has to go over, especially video evidence, reports that are still outstanding. But I think that it is imperative, especially coming up on the anniversary of Stephon Clark, to put these recommendations forward, because the whole intent of the office is to prevent something like this happening again in the future. And these recommendations are coming from OPSA's perspective as to what the community would want to see. First recommendation, I do apologize for reading it directly, but I think that these words are important, and I don't want to miss anything, so if you could just bear with me through that. The first recommendation would be that the Sacramento Police Department should review whether the strategic objectives of sensitive police operations, such as the policing of protests, are sufficiently established and communicated within its organization. While I am well aware that the chief has always had a movement towards the community being the basis of how the police should do their work, I think that that foundation should be lived and breathed through everybody else in the department that is making the decisions in the chief's absence. Operational decision-making by incident commanders should be guided by clearly articulated strategic goals, which should include the promotion of community trust. That has to be at the foundation of all their decisions. The next recommendation, Sacramento Police Department should review whether its current process for planning the policing of anticipated protest events sufficiently incorporates stakeholders to include protest organizers and/or community representatives to ensure shared understanding of expectations regarding the policing of protests, and to facilitate public input into the definitions of the policing strategies. From my understanding, no one from the Police Department attempted to contact the organizers of this protest. Not only could that communication have been helpful for the police to know the intent of the organizers, it would have also helped the organizers to know the expectation of the police. For example, not blocking access to vital facilities like hospitals, so their protest would not be viewed as anything other than a constitutional expression of their First Next recommendation, the Sacramento Police Department should review whether its current tactics for communicating with crowds relative to dispersal orders are effective, whether they provide sufficient clarity, and that individuals within the crowd are providing an appropriate opportunity to comply. Moreover, SPD should review whether the decision to use dispersal orders appropriately balances the demands of public safety with the desirability of facilitating peaceful protests and the associated objective of building community trust.
Slow down, please.
I can make you a copy?
No.
You're good?
I need to take it in now, because I may have some follow-up questions.
I'm sorry. And I talk extremely fast, so I do apologize. The Sacramento Police Department should review whether its current model of tactical response to crowd management and crowd control situations is commensurate with the degree of threat posed by the situation. This review should include consideration of the potentially counterproductive effect of policing methods that may appear disproportionate to a given situation.
Okay.
Good. All right. I'll back that one up just really quickly. My notes out of order. Give me one second. I've spoken to many individuals that were participants or observers to the protests. What was relayed to me was at the end of the protest, the presence of officers in riot gear with their batons at the ready, the way officers ran into position, the overt showing of less lethal weapons, and the language used in the dispersal command, more specifically the warning of potential lethal force, may have exacerbated tensions unnecessarily by inciting fear and panic. The dispersal command was given numerous times throughout the protests, according to SPD, no less than 30. It was given where there was no action towards arrests being made, so the command itself may have lost some of its effectiveness to the crowd. When arrest was imminent, there was no distinction made from previous commands given and a final command towards the intent to arrest. The order of dispersal from the area of Fifty-first and Folsom was given, and that's what the protesters did. They moved away from the intersection. What was not communicated to the protesters was that the Police Department had already made the decision to arrest the protesters prior to them reaching the bridge. Protesters were under the impression that if they left the intersection of Fifty-first and Folsom, they were free to go, and that was not the case. The onus of the lack of clarity of this information from OPSA's perspective falls squarely on the shoulders of the Police Department. If these recommendations are implemented, and by reviewing whether its current practices are effective in working with the community representatives and the protest organizers, the Police Department could develop relationships that will enable incident commanders to harness the input and cooperation of such individuals during protest events. These reviews should be done with consideration of reducing the necessity to rely upon coercive police action relative to minor, nonviolent crowd management issues that could arise during any protest event. The review should also include SPD's practices and procedures during both the pre-operation planning phase and implementation of the policing operation itself. When the basis of the protest is regarding the distrust that groups have about the Police Department that is policing the protests, special consideration and patience should be given prior to taking enforcement action, so that any action that is taken is not interpreted as retaliatory or a form of intimidation. As part of my review, I researched national best practices, and I located a plethora of information that could be extremely useful to the Police Department. Organizations like the Police Executive Research Forum, International Association of Chiefs of Police, and multiple police municipalities have done extensive research on crowd management and the effects police response has on protesters can have on the community. I'm ending my presentation with some quotes that I found from the Portland Police Department, the California Post, and US DOJ that hold the same sentiment as what I have covered
Okay. Chief or Assistant Chief, before we turn it over to the Council for questions, do you want to respond now, or do you want to wait for questions? want to respond now, or do you want to wait for questions? Wait for questions. Okay. I know I have some, but let me turn it over first to my members and start with Council Member Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Francine, when Martin Luther King was assassinated, I organized a march in Norfolk, and I went to the mayor's office and to the police chief. We got a parade permit, and we held our demonstration. I take it today that the communication-
Excuse me. Mr. Clark needs to leave the chambers now, please. Mr. Clark needs to leave the chambers now. We're not having this again. Mr. Clark, you cannot, you do this every time you're in the chambers. You can't stay here, sir. I'm sorry. You have to leave. Sir, I'm going to ask you to leave.
You gonna make me leave?
Yes, I am, sir.
Come on, man, this is my relatives, and you gonna tell me to leave?
Yes, sir. Please, everyone, move out of the way. Thank you, I'm going to ask him to leave. He needs to leave. This, this individual does not belong in these chambers.
Actually, he's a citizen.
Oh, you do not.
You're saying, hey, he doesn't belong in here? Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Clark-
I'm Stephon Clark, right? Come on, man, he's a fucking mayor.
Out, Mr. Clark.
The people ask you to do your fucking job.
Out, Mr. Clark.
Stand up for all these people accountable.
Out, Mr. Clark.
And I'm gonna show up every motherfucking day if I have to, and I'm gonna show up and show the fuck out.
Good.
Whether it's right or not.
Right, that's his right.
Take it outside, Mr. Clark.
Because I respect you, so I respect you. I'm gonna tell it like this, you a coward, you's a bitch. Because you, as a mayor, ought not address your own people. You coward ass, bitch ass-
Mr. Clark, you're out.
If it came to me, you wouldn't be mayor. You wouldn't be here. You tell me right now how I have a right to be here?
No.
To voice my opinion, my first amendment constitution? Freedom of speech?
Can you explain the Constitution to Darryl? You're a lawyer.
Sir, I'm going to boot you out too, because you don't know how to behave respectfully in a public, in a public setting.
You knew you bought that other fucking show.
Okay.
Because you can't handle it, but you's a fucking mayor.
You are, you are disrupting the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience.
I'm saying I write the newspaper, right? Sacramento B, right? I ain't talking about all this fucking money that they have, all this money that-
You've been in fair warning.
-all these homeless people, and I was doing everything else. What the fuck have you done, Darryl? You's a fucking excuse as a mayor. You's an excuse, you shouldn't be here. Nobody want you here. And if I was, I was a people Sacramento, I could run out and get you the mayor.
I asked, I asked the Police Department to not let this guy into the chamber.
I don't know your bitch ass, I've seen it a long time ago. And you thinking I'm not gonna come here? I'm gonna come here and I'm gonna say what the fuck I want to say. You can ban me, but you can't ban me coming with the motherfucking people, and you can't ban us from coming here. Motherfucker, we built this motherfuckers for you to be here. We gonna be here right now, and I'm not going out on this fucking shit. You can say whatever you want to say. You can say whatever, Darryl. I'm gonna show the fuck out.
If you continue, I will order you to lea, I've already ordered you to leave the meeting, but now I will do-
You banned me the first time.
You have been given the fair warning and elected to disrupt the meeting. I now order you to leave. Sergeant at arms, please escort Mr. Clark out of the chambers.
And you ain't gotta fucking touch me.
Get him out of here.
You ain't gotta touch me.
Get Mr. Clark out of here, please. He's not welcome.
You know I'm a goat.
Out.
You know I'm a goat.
Out.
Real talk, you know I'm a goat. Out. He's a coward. A fucking coward. Okay, 'cause all y'all white people and all y'all Asian people here see this shit, he's a coward. That's all y'all, that's all you have been, that's all you will be, bruh. Y'all want to protect him and work for this motherfucker and listen to this motherfucker? What the fuck have you done, Darryl? What have you done for Sacramento? Nothing. How the fuck did y'all see her every goddamn day? Walk out this building and see these homeless people?
We're going to take a five-minute recess, we'll come back.
Fuck your recess.
Thank you, this is- To all those who have come to participate in the public meeting, this is, I'm going to try to speak over Mr. Clark in a difficult situation. First of all, to all the scooter, all the scooter advocates, I apologize to you, but we're going to continue that item, okay?
Mayor, can I make a motion to continue?
Motion to continue the scooter item, yes.
Twenty-sixth.
You sign as a mayor, bitch.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, I'm going to try to speak over this Mr. Clark.
We don't need you. We don't want you. We don't need you.
It is an inherent right of all residents of this city to have the opportunity to speak before their city council. What all the activists and others need to know is that by Mr., by this individual, who has a long history of disrupting our meetings, what he, what is, what he is doing, he, he is preventing, he is preventing others from having the opportunity to speak. And so we are going to go to court, and we are going to assure that you are not coming back. And in, and in the meantime-
He's a retard, I'll do a fuck. He's a retard. He's a retard. You talking about history? Talk about your own history. Talk about your own fucking people.
Do the activists want to help trying to escort Mr. Clark out here?
No, these words are never right, I'm about it.
If not, we are, I'm going to assure an orderly chamber for the next meeting, Mr. Clark will not be present, and everyone will then have a chance to be heard. I am sorry that we are not able to continue this meeting this afternoon, because the alternative, the alternative would be to have a forcible-
Hey, Darryl, you really don't like white people?
To, to arrest Mr. Clark now, which I think would create a scene and the potential for even greater tension in the room.
It's gonna be a motherfucking rout.
I don't want to do that.
It's gonna be a motherfucking rout.
And so we are going to, unfortunately, adjourn the meeting this afternoon, and we will reconvene this very important discussion with the chief, with Francine Turner, and with, and with the public as quickly as we can. All right? Thank you very much. This meeting, unfortunately, is adjourned.